I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Dankert.
Mayor Steen.
Present.
Councilmember Large Anderson. Councilmember Fisher.
Present.
Enright.
Present.
King.
Present.
Austin.
Present.
Helly.
Present.
Hagan.
Present.
We have a quorum, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item number one is a motion for adoption of the agenda. We have two additions. With those additions, we need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Item number two is approving amendments from June 4th, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Recognitions and awards. We have two tonight. The firefighters are here to talk about the MDA, fill the boot that's going to be going on. Why don't you go?
Thank you, Mayor. Jim Halsey, Austin Fire Department, Local 598. Just two things, I guess, update on last year. The paper does a good job of publicizing our numbers and we did just shy of $18,000 last year. We had a little bit of rain, kind of shortened our time out there on the street. But we did a great event. The community is always behind us and really gives a lot. So very giving community and we owe the thanks to all of you for allowing us to get out there and do this. It's a great benefit. The MDA raises tons of money for kids that can really use the help and the research and all that stuff. So the other part of that, I guess, is those 17,000, this will be the 10th year.
10th year.
We'll be just shy of, I would say right now, we're just shy of raising $140,000 since we started. So it's been awesome. And the guys we get, the part-time guys come in, the Relief Association, they come in and they help out a bunch and we get the full-time guys in there. We always come home with the Golden Axe Award that the MDA gives us for raising the most money per union firefighter. Again, just shy of $2,000 per firefighter. So that's a huge event or a huge award. We beat out, you know, everybody in, because it's Minnesota, North and South Dakota and Western Wisconsin. And we're number one. We've been that since we started, so.
Jim, could you tell us a little bit what happens with the money? I mean, what, I know, I know, but you know.
Right. The MDA, they have camps, which actually this week is, last week and this week is, they have camps up in central Minnesota. The kids get to go there. They get to experience things that kids with handicaps can't do. You know, they rock climb, they do fishing, they take them canoeing, they swim, they do everything that, you know, they say normal kids get to do. These kids that are born in wheelchairs or end up in a wheelchair, they get, they take them out of their normal day lives and the parents go home. The parents get a week break and these kids get to just, it's the best thing that they do all year. I mean, you ask any of them. So great event for them. They also use the money for research. They're ongoing research all the time at the University of Minnesota. So they're striding, there's huge strides in the research. There's kids that have been in wheelchairs and they're now with some of the drugs and stuff that they're coming up with, they're getting their muscle strength back and their muscle movements so they can actually stand and walk. So it's, we've always had a good turnout with the fire department and the part-time guys and everybody loves to do it. We get together, we have a good time. It's three days, you know, four hours a day and, you know, some days it's really hot, some days it's really wet, but we knock it out and get it done. Some departments do golf events, some do car washes, they do all kinds of different events. But fill the boot, on the street, on duty is the biggest fundraiser, biggest way to make the most money and it works great for us. And we, you know, being that we're number one and we got that Golden Axe at the, on display at the fire station proves that this community is a great giving community.
That proves we have a pretty good fire department, too.
Yep. Well, as I say, it's a community. We give a little and everybody else, they just open their wallets and dump their change in there and, you know, usually it's $1,000 a day and the three days, just in change, pennies and nickels and dimes. So every penny counts. But, oops.
Go ahead.
The second half of that is just to get approval from the council to do it again this year, August 15th, 16th, and 17th. And that's all I have. If anybody's got any questions?
Same locations, Jim?
Yep, yep. Front of the fire station there for the duty crew. We always do 4th Street and then 14th Street. So as, you know, the more people we get, the more people we get to cover the corners because we usually seem to not have enough people. So.
Oh, you guys do a heck of a job on that. We thank you. Oh, we, thank you for that.
Yeah.
Okay? All right? Thanks, Jim.
That's all I have.
Anybody else have any questions?
I'll make the motion to approve the fill the boot campaign.
Second.
What did we do?
Motion.
Oh. There's a first and a second. And what's the motion?
To approve.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? I'm sorry, I guess I was talking a little bit. Okay. Thanks, Jim. And we also have Richard Lemmons, who has run our Human Rights Commission for quite a while. Jason Baskin is doing it now. Richard started, he, I don't see, he's not here. I know you're gonna, who is he? Oh, I'm sorry, Richard. I see ya. Okay. I just want to say before you talk, I mean, we've had a Human Rights Commission since I started here and when Richard got on there, I started getting calls from people saying, this guy's crazy. He's making us do all this work. And I said, I said, but you know what? Then get out of the way and he can get his own people and put them on there. And I, you've done things with that Human Rights Commission that I never thought we'd see. And I think Jason's doing a good job following it up. With that, Jason, did you have a few things to say?
Yeah, so we had, obviously, the Human Rights Commission proud to represent really a wide group of folks from around the community who nominated Richard to receive a key to the city. And Richard, it's incredible because when you think about what he's done, you guys have been here for, what, six and a half years? And in that time, he's been a commissioner and chair of the Austin Human Rights Commission, board member and president of the Symphony Orchestra, founder and chair of the Austin Poverty Task Force, steering committee member and mentor for the Science Fair, volunteer with the All Access Community Experience for Kids with Autism, like halfway through the list at this point, peer advocate for Minnesota Coalition Against Sexual Assault, advisory committee member of the Diversity Council. He's been instructor at Riverland Community College and a tutor. He's taught citizenship classes at the Community Learning Center. He's been a member of Apex. He's been a life coach at the Gerard Academy as well as informally for many of us. And that's just a smattering of the things that he's done. Also, was a member of the Blandon Community Leadership Program. And so the reason that we wanted to publicly recognize Richard, which is about the last thing that he ever asks for is recognition, is the work that he's done has really improved our community in countless ways. Through community conversations, educational events, volunteering with individual kids and people and, you know, big and small acts of kindness really for, across the board, for people in their moments of need. And I think the big thing is when you had Richard Lemmons involved in something, you knew you could count on him for a can-do attitude and a big smile on his face and he was going to work his tail off in order to get the job done. And the fact that he's so approachable and so positive with his attitude, I think, really helps bring people together from a wide diversity of backgrounds in parts of the community. And the focus is never on getting credit. It's about how do I make the community a better place today than it was yesterday? And so we wanted to recognize Richard and his wife Catherine of 43 years as they understandably moved physically away from Austin to be closer to their three kids and five grandchildren. But we know that while you're physically leaving, your spirit will definitely continue to live in Austin. And I think the best thing that anybody can say is that your lasting legacy in the community is that Austin is a better place because you were a part of it. So thank you very much for all your effort and energy.
I don't know how to follow him and I still don't, so that's an issue. I'm really deeply grateful for the recognition. Humbled a bit as well. I have to tell you, the honest truth is that I wouldn't have done any of those things if my wife hadn't kicked me out the door. She was deeply worried that when we moved to Austin with me retired, that I was going to spend all my time working on her problems instead of my own. So I had a deep incentive to get out and find some things to do. And for me, I had two things that I would look for when I looked for volunteer work and that was, first, does it make a difference if I do it? I didn't really want to do things that were just perfunctory and not really going to accomplish anything. So I looked for places where I could, in fact, make a difference. And the second was, I wanted it to be fun doing it. And I'm really happy to tell you that there's a ton of stuff people can do as a volunteer in this town that bring a lot of joy as you do them. And many of the programs I worked with worked with kids and seeing their faces and seeing how they reacted made it not work, but just more play than work. Jason mentioned, we've moved a lot and we're moving again. And for me, this will be the first time I have the sense of leading community. All of our moves in life at this point have been mainly my job transfers and the job was wherever we went. So it wasn't like I was separating from something. In this case, I'm separating from something and it's a little painful to walk away from this community and the people that are in it. You'll always be in our hearts.
Well, Richard, it's going to be painful to lose you and you really have made a difference in our town. I have a key to the city I'd like to present to you and I'm sure everybody would like to... When are you leaving?
We actually depart on the end of July, July 30th. We'll actually be physically dropping.
Okay. Well, you have one more. You have the 4th of July here.
That's right. That's right.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Richard is what makes Austin, Austin. I mean, he really just, I couldn't believe it when he took over and started, got very, very, very active with the forums and all the different things. And I mean, he really have made a difference in our town and we certainly appreciate that.
Mayor Steen, can I make a quick comment?
Sure.
I had the pleasure of working with Richard on Vision 2020 on the Gig Austin Project, which didn't even make the list of Jason. Yeah, there you go, you're in on it. But I feel as though we should really take note of what Mayor Steen said a few minutes ago and we'll now call it the Lemons Leadership Indicator. If you cause people to make phone calls where they say this person's crazy, it's a sign of good leadership.
Yep, that was. Well, you know, actually it was my daughter. She was on the commission for a while and she said, I'm just kidding, she's given us homework. And I said, you know what? He's got his own thing and we let Richard put his, if you really want to do something good, put your own people on it. And he did. As people fell off as they do, you know, he would find people that wanted to do, you know, that were as excited as he was. And it's turned that commission around 100% and it's done an awful lot of good for the city of Austin. So thank you. Anybody else before we're done? All right. Thank you. Now we come to, we need a motion for the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Number five.
And Stain. Thank you.
We don't need to roll, do we, Tom? Under petitions and requests, number five is a motion declining an offer from Landmark Dividend for the purchase of a cell tower lease. We did talk about that. Anybody have any questions? If not, we need a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Number six is a resolution accepting donations to the city. We need a resolution.
So moved and we're on a solution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Resolution passes 6-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. Number seven is a resolution designating election judges and polling places for the 2018 primary and general election. Ms. Hazel.
Yes, this is our required resolution by statute appointing our election judges. These individuals listed in the resolution have volunteered their time, will be trained at a training sessions, three different training sessions in July, and then will serve at the general and the primary elections. And they are essential to our process, so we appreciate all they do for us and their volunteering. So I would request you pass this resolution.
Do we have any questions, comments? If not, we need a resolution.
So moved. Second.
Tom, Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Resolution passes 6-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. Number eight is a resolution approving an extension of lease with the Department of Public Safety for a portion of Todd Park. Ms. Underwood.
Thank you, Mayor. This is just, as it says, an extension of the lease. They use a portion of the north complex parking lot to set up a testing site for motorcycle, for their safety, the Department of Public Safety.
You mean they give the class out there?
Yeah, they go there for their testing, so when you're...
Get your motorcycle.
Get your motorcycle, you go someplace to run through the tests that they set you up for.
Okay. Questions, comments? If not, we need a resolution.
So moved the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Resolution passes 6-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. Nine is a motion reviewing a variance request from Jase, Jared Hatlily. Holly?
Yes, Your Honor and counsel, Jared Hatlily, 2006 4th Avenue Southwest, Austin, requested at our June 12th, 2018 planning meeting, a variance to allow him to build a second detached garage. He currently has one detached garage on the property. Adding a second 1,000 square foot garage would exceed our code allowance of a maximum of 1,000 square feet. The Planning Commission reviewed the variance request and recommended denying the request by a vote of six to zero. The recommendation looked at whether the requested zoning would be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance, or the variance, if granted, would alter the essential character of the locality in which the property is situated, whether there are any circumstances unique to the property not created by the landowner, and whether the landowner intends to use the land in a reasonable manner not permitted by the ordinance. And the Planning Commission found that the granting the variance would alter the essential character and that there were no circumstances unique to the property.
So their recommendation was?
To deny the request for the variance.
Okay. Counsel, any comments, questions, remarks, observations? If not, we need a motion for number nine, declining.
I need a motion to deny the variance.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Thank you. Number 10 is a resolution approving the transfer of a hard liquor, on sale Sunday liquor, on sale to Salvador Victoria DBA Bella, Victoria Italian Cuisine. Ann?
Yes, this is just a simple transfer of a liquor license. The ownership interest is being transferred, so they have filled out all the paperwork, have all the necessary insurance, so we would request that you transfer the license.
Any questions, counsel? If not, we need a resolution.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Resolution passes 6-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. 11 is a resolution ordering the securing of property at 700 10th Street Northeast. Anybody have any questions on that? If not, we need the resolution.
So moved the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Resolution passes 6-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. 12, the resolution, is a resolution declaring the property at 409 12th Street Northeast a hazardous structure? Does anybody have any questions on this one? Then we need the resolution.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Resolution passes 6-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. And finally, 13 is a series of motions, four of them, it looks like granting the planning and zoning department a power to contract for the removal of junk and/or illegally stored vehicles at A, 1001 4th Avenue Northeast, the Regor Homes. We need a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. B, 500 11th Street Northeast, Lee Property. Need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. C, 506 11th Street Northeast, J S Two Properties Property. Need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. And finally, D, 1904 22nd Drive Southwest, the Mitchell Property.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. All right. And we're now to, any citizens here?
We've got 14.
14 is an addition. 14, receiving bids for the Eastside Lake Dam Plaza. Stephen?
Yes, we've identified in our CIP some work to make improvements by the Eastside Lake Dam, following the cleanup of that area with the new bridge and the retaining walls over there. We wanted to provide some areas for people to maybe take a break or oversee the dam, oversee the lookout area. And so we have, we've developed a project with the Hormel Foundation grant of $15,000 and $10,000 coming from the city to develop a $25,000 project to improve that area with sidewalks, park shelter, and also some historical signage. And in front of you today is a bid from, with the low bidder being Jim Cummings Concrete of $9,701 to do the concrete and sidewalk work at the site. We did also have some other bidders on the project as well, but we would request that you approve this bid for Jim Cummings. And then, again, we'll also have some additional work coming later with the park shelter and some historical signage.
Okay. On this photograph, we got all the red is the plaza, the new stuff that we're talking about?
Yeah, the red is all the new stuff. We're looking at adding some stairs. That's something that was there before, but they were very deteriorated, so we want to replace that. It's kind of a place where people can sit, kind of overlook the dam, but we also wanted to create a sidewalk for, that would meet ADA requirements so that people can get down, right down to the dam as well. So one of those sidewalks there in red is meeting ADA requirements to get down that slope and get people down to the fence so they can overlook, they can fish and do whatever they want to there.
So timeframe, we'd be looking at next year?
No, the contractor, Jim Cummings Concrete, is actually ready to start on it. If approved tonight, ready to start tomorrow.
Great. Counsel, questions, comments?
Stephen, is that bid amount that Cummings, his bid, also include that he gets the $15,000 Hormel Foundation, he gets the $10,000 city?
Nope, just his bid of $9,700 to do the concrete work. And then we will take the remaining dollars and apply those toward a park shelter that'll come later and also the historical signage that'll come later.
Why is it so cheap? It's a lot of concrete for that amount.
Yeah.
That's why we bid him out. He asked Mitch questions beforehand, so we anticipate there's clear understanding. He was ready, he's ready to get started and do the work for that price.
How many bids did we get?
Three.
I'm not going to ask you what the...
Get loaders and a dump truck there right now.
All right, counsel, any more questions or comments? If not, we need a resolution.
So moved.
Is there a second? Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Resolution passes 6-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. Any citizens here tonight that wish to address the counsel?
I do know.
Okay, ma'am, why don't you give us your name, where you live and...
My name is Tracy Anne Farrow.
Well, you got to come up here where there's a microphone. You're on TV, don't be nervous.
I'm very nervous. Very nervous.
Okay.
My name is Tracy Anne Farrow. I'm, that's my married name. I am a McAllister, born in Mapleview, Minnesota. A great, wonderful place to be. My concerns are the safety and well-being of the city of Austin in general, its citizens. Being a mother, being a daughter, being a cousin, being a friend, I have seen so much unsafe things happening right here in the community where I call home. It's amazing to me to see what goes on.
You have to be more specific.
Well, there's a lot of crime going on that I see in general on a daily basis from people that I have relationships with. I've worked at Gerard Treatment Center. I was a counselor, worked with children, and I especially see it with children, as well as my own, on what goes on in this town. I also have criminal justice experience. I took classes at Riverland Community College, two of the best instructors ever. I salute them, Rich Watkins, as well as Steve Walt, a former police officer here.
I worked with Steve, yep.
He is a very, very wonderful instructor with a very good police discretion. And I see a lot of things going on in this city of ours that I love, that I have a passion for, because I came back after a year and a half of being gone. And it's amazing to me to see all of the unsafety, the insecurity and the dysfunction in all of the homes, the broken homes due to abuse, due to drug addiction, due to alcohol addiction as well as a lot of other things going on right here. So I'm just wondering, as a concerned citizen, as well as my strength and determination for my own children, who I love more than anything in this world, they're my grandfather's legacy, they're my father's legacy. My grandfather was Charles Harold McAllister, wonderful human being, as well as my cousin Brian McAllister, who took in my grandfather's footsteps. So I'm going to take it, take in my grandfather's footsteps as just being a concerned citizen at seeing what's going on and what's going to be done for our children.
Okay. Is that it?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. We'll start with Judy. Is there anybody, any other citizens that wish to address the council? Judy?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Steve?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Jeff?[1486.94]